All right, we'll get this meeting started. It's 5:30, Monday, August 2nd. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of International Falls. First item on our agenda is pledge allegiance to the plague. If you could all join me.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, be remissable with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that Councilor Kraus is on vacation. I believe he's in, well, he's out west somewhere. So we have all members of the council present with the exception of Councilor Kraus. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. And to the best of my knowledge, we have neither. So the chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor, oh, I remember you, Buller, right? Yeah, it's been a while. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We have the regular minutes from July 19th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 4-0. And second, we have the minutes of Monday, July 26th. It's a special city council meeting. Please note that it was started at 5:01 and it ended at 5:03 for a full two minutes of meeting time. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. We have, we have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, we go to the approval of transfers, payments, claims, and accounts payable. Our first transfers, we have to the general fund of $455.94, and that's coming from the 812 lodging tax fund. We have accounts payable, regular International Falls claims of $1,363,864.85. Airport commission claims of $104,152.48. Airport capital project claims of 800, I'm sorry, $8,630. Airport runway reconstruction phase one, $20,968.45. Phase two, $75,110.15. And phase three of $2,183,117.58. For a total accounts payable and claims of $3,755,843.51. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for payments of claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Councilor Buller, did you have a question on the council or the payable?
No.
Okay.
Passed today.
Okay, fantastic.
Done.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, we go to audience for anything that, or anything to address the council that's not on the agenda. Please, if you want to come up and speak into the microphone, make sure that it's on.
Oh, you can hear me.
But they can't outside the room.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty. My name is Arnie Nass. I live at 612 Fifth Avenue here in the Falls. My wife, Barbara, we built that house 25 years ago. So we have the newest home in the oldest part of town. So I'm also called the mayor of the east end of the ghetto. There's a house at 607 Sixth Street. I'm sorry, 507, 506, thank you, that's why I brought her, 506 Sixth Street. The grass hasn't been mowed, it had been mowed once, and I'm starting small, once this summer, the whole summer. The lawn has not been raked in two years, period. And this is the fourth time, last week Leon, or the week before?
It was last week, we were over there.
The fourth time in two years, I've had to call Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Myers to come and see if those people will pick the garbage bags up out of their backyard. The fourth time, guys, in two years. So they come over and I talk to them, Leon was kind enough to join us, so he's seen it. It was laying there. This time it was only six or eight bags. Last summer it was probably 30. And it stayed there three weeks before it finally got picked up. Now, do you can imagine in the middle of the summertime, guys, with 30 bags of trash, refuse, garbage laying in the backyard next door to my house, newest house in that part of town. I've had enough. I'm not going to do this anymore. Something has got to be done, one way or the other, and I don't know what it is, but I'm going to investigate and see what I can do as a homeowner. What is it that the city council can do to make sure this crap doesn't go on? And I'm not the only one in town, guys, this, this is going on all the time. And those kids that are out there trying to do a good job and talking to themselves to me like they don't have a lot of bullets for their gun. What power do they have? If they show up and say, I want you to do this, and I tell them where to go, what power do they have? They have nothing. If I refuse to do it, eventually we'll go to court, but we shouldn't have to do that. So back to the garbage thing. Why is it that we don't have a city ordinance of some kind that says, hey, if it's a rental property, it has a set of gas garbage cans? That's not hard. If it's a rental property, it has a set of garbage cans. Now, this last time, just so everybody's on the up and up, they have an abandoned pickup in the back that they filled the box full of garbage, then they started hauling it to the garage, and then they got too doggone lazy and just started firing it out the damn door. Now, that's right there, there's just a little wire fence between my yard and theirs. I should, don't think I should have to put up with this, guys, and I'm not going to put up with it. I'm going to figure out who it is I can sue. Is it the city? Is it the homeowner? Is it the landlord? Who it is? Because I'm, I'm done, I've had enough. Four times in two years is enough. So that's, that's pretty much my bellyache, guys. Got to be something done. You know, I, I grew up in that neighborhood, and I decided to build that new house 25 years ago because that was the neighborhood I grew up in, where we wanted to live. Unfortunately, 25 years later, I think it was a big mistake on my part. I should have never built it there. I should have moved it out someplace else where I guess more affluent people live and we don't have these issues. But I didn't. So that's all I got to say, that's the only, that's the end of it. But rest assured, guys, it's not the end of it for me because I'm not going to let this lay. I've, I've put up with it now, this is the fourth time, and I'm not putting up with it anymore. Thank God for the drought, for the drought, the drought this year, guys, because they only mowed the grass once, and that was two foot high when they finally mowed it. Hasn't been raked in two years. Yard is completely full of leaves. It's just ridiculous, and it's a rental unit. And I've had trouble, now this is the new landlord, so she's only had this about three years. I've had trouble with this house for 10, 10 years, you name it, I've had it, I've witnessed it. I've had to call the police, welfare, called, I've, I'm done, I've had enough. So anyhow, thank you for your time, I just wanted to inform everybody what was going on.
I appreciate that. And just, just one clarification for Steve, we do have it that, that you have to have garbage service if you're a landlord, is that not correct?
Well, everybody, whether you're a landlord or not, you have to dispose of your garbage. And, you know, I'm not sure of this address, but I, you know, also, we have the ability and have at times taken that gar, you know, same person that we hire to mow grass, we can have remove garbage and charge it back to the property and, and I believe that actions being taken, now there is one property, and maybe this is it, where the police were involved because there was actually somebody trespassing on the property, and the person that was on the property wasn't, they weren't a renter, they, they were just basically squatting and being there, and, and I think there's, it was the individual I think of, I think there's an arrest warrant out for him, and they were trying to locate him, to arrest him and take him to jail. But in, in this particular situation, you know, it's been to our attention and attempting to rectify it, but it's been a, it's been a problem because the, the individual that's been doing this and putting the garbage there is basically a trespasser. And I think in addition to, and I don't know if this is the one, but in addition to garbage, there's one where this person's brought a bunch of tires in, and I don't know if that's your property or, or one, and, but we're attempting to address it, and it's not the owner or renter, it's an individual who has a significant criminal history that's basically, I'm thinking homeless and is using this place as, as a place to hang out and.
The original renter had been there four or five months.
Yeah.
It was a steady stream of people that were coming to go on two or three or four in the morning.
So our fire marshal's been involved, I've been involved, the police have been involved, and, you know, at, at one point, I think one day last week, we had a report that he was even at the property, and everybody got notified and they, but they couldn't find him to arrest him. But we are attempting to deal with it.
I have one quick thing here that'll shut up. I've, I've been a landlord in the past, and I understand that the COVID thing was an issue when you couldn't get people, you think, all of that stuff. But as a landlord, as a landlord, your responsibility does not end in the first of the month. You come by, you take a look at your backyard and say, my God, if that grass, if they're not going to do it, I'll do it. My God, look at the garbage, let me get over there so I don't disturb them. That's what a landlord is supposed to do.
Councilor Buller, that was, that was my next question. Where's the landlord involved in this? Is it, are they involved in it too? I mean, they should be, they should be into it knee deep.
Yeah. If it's the landlord that I'm thinking of, they've been having some serious health issues in Medontumia Clinic and, and, no, not a different one? Okay.
A young girl, probably 48.
Oh, as the owner?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, I'm confusing it with a different one.
I guess it's part of the issue.
Okay. Can we just get an update on this for the committee, the whole meeting next week so we can get Jared involved, or Jared there so we can hear where we're at on this so it can be rectified?
And what's been done between now and then.
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else here for public forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Consider the second and final reading of the ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Minnesota Power. Chair would entertain a motion for the second and final reading.
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries 4-0. We don't have anything on the consent agenda this evening, so the next one is resolution terminating the COVID-19 local emergency. I'm going to hand this over to Betty to explain what we're doing. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Due to the President and the Governor both declaring the peacetime orders back in March of 2020, and then Governor Walz, the state emergency was terminated effective July 1st of 2021, the city had adopted a resolution back in March of 2020 as well, kind of mirroring those items in place, the, oh my goodness, the social distancing, masking, you know, all of the guidelines laid out by the CDC, and, and that was in a resolution 28-20. And in that resolution, it said that they would be in effect until this body took further action. Therefore, even though the Governor terminated their emergency order, this body needs to take an official action as well, and that's what this resolution lays out for you.
Okay, so we can take this resolution because without having Councilor Kraus here this evening, correct?
Yes, you can. If you were just rescinding the previous resolution, you could not. You would need the full council in place to rescind a previous resolution, but you were just terminating the local emergency, therefore you are able to do that with the board you have present.
Okay, so with that background, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution terminating the COVID-19 local emergency.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion or questions? Please.
Can we backdate a resolution like this?
It would be effective as of July, and the mayor actually made the motion in the July meeting, but due to the fact that you had made the resolution to put that emergency in place, they prefer that you make a resolution again to, you know, terminate that resolution. So it, it's formality more than it is.
I see it back, it's for July of 2021.
21.
Is what it says on here. And we're in August now, but we can backdate it to July.
Correct, because you already had the motion made in July, yes.
Okay. Question, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, Rainier River International Full Scale Response Exercise, Willie Kostick.
I believe everybody in their packets should have the information that I want to talk about. And I'll start with a little bit of background of what Operation Wall-E is. Three years ago, I applied for a large grant from Homeland Security, and I got it, and it has to be involved with a rail or pipeline disaster. So what it did, it gave me the, it, it let me hire a planner to help me put together a bunch of exercises, training, tabletop exercises, things like that, to get our community ready for a response to a rail disaster. The scenario is going to be based around a rail disaster in Rainier. Everybody knows that the railroad that goes through Rainier is the busiest port on the northern border. Every imaginable amount of chemicals that come through, you know, it's, it's probably the main area where the most chemicals come through. So we need to, we need to plan for a response to that. So what I've done is if you look at your fact sheet, the yellow one that says Operation Wall-E, Operation Wall-E is based on three components. It's planning, training, and exercising. And what we've done, we've done a series of, like I said, table tops and, and exercises that have built up to, it's a culmination, the full scale is a culmination of all of those trainings that we've done in the last three years. And what I want to do, and I'm, I'm not going to go too much into this because it would take, I could talk about this for a couple hours, but I basically want you to, to know that on the 26th of August, we are going to do a full scale in the Rainier area, but we're also going to do several evaluation points. If you turn to the map that I gave you, there's several, several evaluation points that I've marked out in the blue. Those are on the American side, and on, on the, the purple ones on the north side of Rainier River, those, Canada, specifically Fort Frances, Ontario, and the, the province of Ontario are going to be participating in our full scale that day. So starting on the left side, if you look at the blue at Rainier Lake Medical Center, I've created a bunch of objectives for each one of these evaluation sites, and those objectives what are what drives this exercise is full scale. So those objectives, I've met with each one of these evaluation sites, created the objectives that I wanted to see done that day, and then an evaluator will be assigned to each evaluation point, they'll look at those evaluation list, and when that full scale, when that, that call comes in that that accident has happened, then they have to follow that protocol of those objectives and on how to handle that disaster and what comes into them. Rainier Lake Medical Center will be getting, I'll be, I'll be utilizing a lot of actors and role players that will be mulled, they will be sent to these different evaluation sites, and then each site will have to test their emergency operations plan for that specific site. And so I, I think I have around 20 to 25 different role players that will be participating in that, and we're going to have a simulation cell, if you see on the right side of that map, that'll be based in a candle lever. Those, that simulation cell is, is Homeland Security staff that, that are coming in that will throw injects, injects to each one of those evaluation sites. So those, each evaluation site will be tested not only in the objectives that they have, but as the evaluator sees that maybe something is slowing, it needs to have more action at that site, the simulation cell will send that information to that evaluation site. Now, not only Rainier Lake Medical Center, but if you keep looking to the right, Public Health is going to be setting up a shelter at VACUS. So we're going to set up a full shelter activation there, we'll have role players going in and test their emergency operations plan also. How they're going to handle those role, the evacuation, the people that will be evacuated from Rainier and how they're going to handle that, and those people coming in, the intake process, cots will be set up, things like that, in conjunction with the American Red Cross at that scene. We're also going to test the emergency operations center, it's going to be fully staffed, and that's below the law enforcement center. Dispatch will be evaluated. We're also going to have a boom deployment. If you see in the center of the page, CN actually donated fence booms to our, our cause here, which is a real, real big asset for us. Fence booms compared to other booms sit farther in water because we have a fast-moving water on that Rainier River, and if we have materials, top-floating substance that comes in, if you don't have fence booms, when the substance hits the regular boom, it will go under it because of the fast-moving water. Fence boom sits lower and it'll trap the substance right there. So it's important to have those. And, and thanks to Ken Collins from CN Rail that is here with us, he made that happen for us. I can't say enough about what he's done to help us with that. We also met with the water plant supervisor on our side, and he's going to be having a evaluator at, at that site also, because if you look at where the water take is, it's about 800 yards straight towards the Rainier Bridge, any top-floating substance or any substance that goes into the water may affect our drinking water in our area. So they have a set of objectives that they're going to complete in, in preparation for that. And likewise, on the, on the Canadian side, they're also going to be participating in this, and there's going to be communication between both countries, which has never really been done before. We're going to be testing our radio communications between America and the Canadian officials, which is, I should say it's been done once before in Detroit. So it'll be a big, it'll really be a show how far we've come along in this community, and testing our communications is a really big part of it. To simulate the top-floating substance, we're going to be putting wood chips into the water at the Rainier Bridge. Now, that, that simulates, like I say, a crude oil substance that may be floating, or any chemical that would be floating on the surface. Now, before I could, was able to do that, I did get prior approval from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the DNR, and the Canadian officials, and our dam to make sure that that wasn't going to cause any problems with, you know, with any one of their, especially the dam and the generators that they have there. Now, again, if you keep moving forward, the Rainier Hall, I've, I've got that secured, and along with the incident location is going to actually take place directly west of the post office in Rainier. And that field is going to have a rail car on a trailer, and our, our fire department and our cat team will be responding to it as if it was the real thing. So and it gives, it gives all of these different resources a really good test of their ability to respond to a disaster. So with that, there are several different agencies, if you look at the next page of my press release that I did put out, and I'm going to be putting out another press release, I'm going to be going on the radio, I'm also going to be briefing the Rainier City Council and the county board here shortly about everything that we'll be doing. You've got the material, and I, and I really don't want to get too deep into this because, again, I could speak for hours on, on what we've done. It's a big undertaking. We're going to have, I know this press release said 25, but I think we're over 35 different responding agencies, both local, state, and federal. This exercise has gathered so much attention that FEMA now, in my world, which is what probably the biggest recognition, is now going to put it in an international newsletter on what we're doing and going to be sending FEMA representatives here to observe. So it's gathering a lot of attention, positive attention. It's going to be, we believe, the largest full-scale exercise that Minnesota has ever done, and it's going to be happening here. There's going to be a lot of people being, that'll be staying both in International Falls and in Rainier. So really what I wanted to do, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, is briefly go over this, if you have any questions. But I mainly wanted to talk about the evaluation sites that are going to be, it's going to be very busy in the city of International Falls and in Rainier. I've briefed the chief and the captain already about what to expect with that, and there may, may need additional manpower, of course, to kind of oversee, you know, the traffic just to make sure that everything goes smoothly. But I'm, I'm here mostly if there's any questions from you. Is there anything that I could answer?
Counsel, any questions?
No, I just.
Very cautious.
I think it's great.
It's a, it's a large undertaking.
Yeah.
I, it's probably more than what I thought it was going to be. It's growing because more people keep wanting to join, so that makes my job harder to create more objectives for those agencies so that injects can be sent to them. But you know, I think it's the best thing for our community. It's going to get us ready for anything, not just a rail disaster, but for any disaster because we've been, the, the most positive thing that comes out is that we've been working together for the last three years, all these different agencies, and we've got a good rapport, a good networking, so if something does come up, we know the people to call. And, and that's one of the biggest positives that come out of this.
Thank you, sounds like a lot of work that you've put in. Great job.
Lot, lots of man hours, I have to say, you know, more than what I've said here, I've just touched so lightly on, on the surface of it, but at the end of the day, what the objectives create, what we've wrote for each one of these evaluation sites, and evaluators will look, they will take the notes, they will check the boxes, they won't check the boxes. Whatever comes out of that then comes back to me as information, and I will create an after, what's called an after-action report, which I have here from all the different training sessions that were done in the past. You're more than welcome to take a look at, at how well they're done, their, the improvement items that come out of it, then that agency takes those improvement items back to their organization and trains. If there's gaps in what they, how they've responded or in their plans, they make, they, they bridge those gaps with future training and correct those problems. So, you know, as long as I'm here, I, I, I hope that you just, if I would, just pass these around so you can see how detailed they really are and what will be generated from this exercise after it's done, which you all will get a copy of. So you'll see how well everyone did and the improvement items that need, I'm not going to use a grade on any of this, this is all no fault, so we're, we're only hoping to learn and get positive things from it. So.
Great.
Anything else? Would you like to take a look at these while you're here, or no time for that? All right. We'll save that for another time then, that's fine. Do you have any questions for me? I also, I'll save the data at the very back, back page, just so that you can put that reminder up, and I, and I believe with social media, the local, now the local newspaper, radio, that I'm going to get the word out, we're also going to have DOT signs that are going to be on 11 East on both the west side and the east side entrance in the Rainier, saying the day before that it's going to be a training session the next day, and the day of, training exercise in progress. So we don't want to scare anybody, there'll be. There'll be constant radio broadcasts during the day to make sure, let people know that nothing's really happening. And of course, our first responders will not respond with lights or siren because it's not a true emergency and we can't do that. So, but there's going to be a lot of traffic, you know. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of this great thing that's coming to our area and how lucky we are to have it. So.
Great.
I'm going to ask one thing. Ken, I know there's, I may have left a lot of things out, but would you like to say anything as far as representing CN?
Okay, I'm the deputy supervisor and manager for CN. I cover from the border to just north of Chicago. So when this started a few years ago, it was not thought to be a really big deal. But like Willie has said, it's definitely grown. It's grown internally for CN as well. Our public affairs official will be here answering any questions because we can't argue, usually. But it's costing CN a lot of money for this drill as well internally. But we want to test our own systems and see how well we integrate our two agencies integrate. So we're going to, we're going to treat it true, like it's true.
Yeah.
And just how we would handle it. We have a training prior to the event. So we've, we'll have the fire department up to speed on boom deployment prior to it happening so everybody goes home safe. But yeah, it's definitely a big deal. And Willie's done a great job putting this all together.
Thank you. We're also going to have a helicopter coming in. North Air Memorial is going to actually bring their helicopter up. And after the waivers are signed, some of my role players will be transported in the helicopter from the scene to the helicopter that'll be landing next to the statue in that field and then brought to our hospital. And when they're dropped off at the hospital, that's, that's when the evaluation process not only starts with the helicopter personnel, but also starts with the hospital personnel at that point and how they triage, they may have to decon. The Rain Lake Medical Center's a lot of money for this training that's coming up, which has made them better. So I feel very confident in our local hospital that they'd be able to handle any hazardous material, injuries that may come out of, say, a real one.
And there will be a VIP bus going from each location so they can evaluate as well.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that because I wanted to invite as many as that can come without the open the meeting law violation. But I'm going to have, Arrowhead Transport has donated a bus that day with a driver. And I'm going to have, we'll call it a tour guide that will be on there. And I would like the local VIPs, the councilmen from here, our board members, I'm going to have representatives from Senator Klobuchar's office, Senator Smith's office, Representative Eklund is going to be there. They're all going to be transported on that bus to all the different evaluation sites so they can get a firsthand view of how an EUC, Emergency Operations Center, works, how the hospital is responding to this, you know, how the incident command is doing, how our dispatch is handling this flood of calls and all the different evaluation sites. So they're going to be able to see firsthand, you know, this grant that they gave me, which is a large one, and it's being put to good use, you know. So they've all agreed to come. Thanks for bringing that up. Another one of the things I forgot. I know I've taken up a lot of your time. Is there any other questions that I can answer?
I like the beauty that both countries are involved, like with the water plants.
Agreed.
You know, drinking water is a big thing and.
That's, that's going to, that could potentially, you know, it could be a big thing. But CN does a really good job of, you know, taking those precautions on all of their trains. As you see, there's, we've not had anything like that happen, you know. But we still have to prepare, no matter what, you know. And when you talk about the Canadian officials, they jumped right on board on this and made my life a little harder because now I got to create, well, you know, more objectives for them. But their public information officer joined, their city council, their fire department, their hazardous material teams from Thunder Bay, everybody jumped on board on this because it doesn't happen that often.
And the donation we made to the fire department, to the boom that Willie was talking about is in a Connex container by the river. It's theirs to use at their discretion.
All right. Well, thank you.
That is going to be the boom. And if you drive out to Lebanon East, take a look at that Connex. It's right there, it says International Falls Fire Department on it. And I can't say enough good things. Ken is on my design team. He's been on there since February as one of the representatives and has done a fantastic job. Great, great relationship is what we have to have and what we have to build. And he makes that happen too. So can't say enough good things about him.
Well, great. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is approve the agreement for contracting athletic director services effective July 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
So move.
A motion, a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four zero. Consider ordinance of the fifth series amending the ordinance 26 of the fifth series to correct the legal description of land being annexed to the city of International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion?
They'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion. City Administrator, you want to give some quick background on this?
If I may, Mayor and Counsel, thank you. This was a, or an ordinance, excuse me, to bring in to the city limits those properties that were abiding city limits but were not owned, they are owned by the city but not within our city limits. The original ordinance was 26 Fifth Series. It was back in August of 18. There was some discrepancies on the description of the property, the legal description and the mapping. And we have since clarified and cleaned that up. And the Office of Administrative Hearings has approved all of that information. Therefore, this ordinance in front of you is ready to move forward.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have two recommendations from the Human Resource Committee, or Human Resource Committee. Allow advertising to fill the full-time paramedic position. Chair would entertain a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have recommend hiring Robert Heinlein to the Public Works Maintenance Worker One position. Chair would entertain that motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries four zero. Discuss publication to the Rainy Lake Gazette, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I've been talking with the city attorney in regards to the city charter indicates that in order for us to put a publication, it has to be in business for at least one year. And so Steve has done some research on that and has some further information on, a recommendation on moving forward with that.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the problem we have is that the requirements of our charter for the official newspaper, there is no newspaper in existence that can meet that. But we have to have publications, we have to move forward with it. So it's my recommendation that the council designate the new Rainy Lake Gazette as the official paper for the city of International Falls for publications. And moving forward, I would also suggest that the charter be amended the next time we're doing amendments on the charter to remove those requirements that can't be met. And the Rainy Lake Gazette is being used by the county, it's going to be used by court administration. So that's where all the notices are going to be. And in addition, I think we should keep placing those on our website and on the bulletin board, you know, as we have during this period when we haven't had a newspaper to publish those notices.
I would agree with you. The chair would entertain a motion to utilize the Rainy Lake Gazette as its official newspaper.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. I was discussing this with the city administrator earlier today. It does amaze me the amount of people that do read the minutes out of our meetings. And it is a way to be transparent. So even though by our charter rules that we don't meet for this particular circumstance, I do think it's very important to get our information out to the public. So I think that this is very good move on the council's behalf. So we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. So one of the things that the city administrator or city attorney had just mentioned is to make a request to the Charter Commission regarding this, this language. Is that something the council wants to take up at this time? It seems like it comes up about once every 103 years. Do we want to make a recommendation to amend the charter for this particular issue? Yes.
Some of the wording in the charter says whenever in a city known newspaper is published, any paper printed in English language and published, Kitchin County may be designated as the official paper.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we're okay with just.
Any paper can be, from the last sentence in there, any paper can be, but if there's no newspaper, but we have a newspaper, but it doesn't meet the criteria of being there for a year yet. So I think, yeah, I think we're, I'm not an attorney, but I think we're, we're on, we're on board with it.
Well, if this comes up in 103 years, you'll still be here, right?
I hope so.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to any other business to come before the council, please.
I had a question posed to me that I couldn't answer off the top of my head. I think I got an idea what it is, but I'm not sure. The question basically was, on the Highway 53 corridor, as we're coming into town, one side, or one sidewalk's paved, but on the other side of the street, it's blacktop. Why is that?
Like that.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yep. All right, any other business to come before the council? We'll go to the reports of the administrator.
I have nothing additional, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
I have nothing additional. I don't have an updated report today on the criminal cases because my assistant was on vacation last week and gone sick today. So, but there has not been, much happened since our last meeting two weeks ago. We do have a number of cases that are set for August 16th, which would be two weeks from today. So I'll be spending most of that day prior to the council meeting handling criminal cases, a number of them are blight. So we should have some updates hopefully at our next meeting. And I will get ahold of Jared in the morning to find out about this 506 Sixth Street to see exactly what's been happening and what can be done to correct that problem.
Thank you so much. And as he was speaking, I was listening to all the words he was saying. And I'm running through our list to see if that was on there, and I didn't see it, so.
No, I don't see it on the list, but I'm almost certain that it's one that I've spoken verbally with Jared about.
Okay.
And we'll get right on it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Department heads? Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I've had it come to my attention that there is some changes to come, move forward with the charter that would make it necessary for us to have a public hearing. We do have the chair of the Charter Commission here. We also have a member of the Charter Commission here. Pete, do you want to speak on what we're looking at doing?
I could still find my way back here, so. And just, you know, Willie did mention, but I was very big in this thing that happened here, so. And people asked why I retired. Maybe that's, but no. Anyhow, what we're doing with the Charter, what we're doing with the Charter Commission, I guess we've been going a couple of years now, the group we have now, we're going through and redoing. And then it ended up being more than just update. We're kind of redoing the whole thing. We're making it, what the city does according to the charter for the most part is staying the same, but we're changing how it is, making it easier to read. But one of the things that came to us, to our attention from the council at one time and other city employees is the bonding process. And we, we are suggesting that instead of taking it to a vote, like it says now in the charter of the electorate, is to, the city council themselves decides if we're going to bond. And that's all going to follow state law, of course. So a lot of what we have in our charter, we're going to take out. It's going to be easier and it basically going to say, at the top of my head, I don't have it memorized, but the city council has a authority to bond for like infrastructure, road maintenance, stuff like that, and follow state laws. Because, look, you want to follow the state laws. And if we take ours out, our language, well, then we don't have to worry about conflicting so much with the state law. And we had our, the bond attorney for the county look over it, and she met with us last week, and that's what she recommended. But the problem is, seeing as we're making so many changes to the charter and just not updating a few things, it's going to have to go to, the charter's going to have to get approved by the electorate at the next election. Even if we were going to have a special election, there's not enough time for that. But we'd want, would want to get the bonding part because we think that's imperative with all the projects we have going on in case we have to get some, do some bonding and you can use the, you know, you never know when the rates are the best, you can jump on it, you don't have to go through the whole process. But to do that, to change this, what we want to, and by this ordinance is just say, change that specific part of the charter and do that by ordinance so we can get it in there, change it, and you guys can go ahead with your bonding issues any way you want, or if you feel we need them, if that's what you choose. Otherwise, we would, it would be in, and we're looking at next year, we should have it done by next year, hopefully. And then when it goes to the electorate, it'd have to wait till then, but it'd be a whole year where we could miss out on some opportunities for interest and things like that. So that's what that's about. And that's what the ordinance, we're looking to do. And I will put that on my list too, to make sure we take out both the paper and that at the next one. But, and just that's it, I believe that's correct, right?
Okay. So if the council's okay with that, I would call for a special, or a public hearing. What would be the earliest, could we do it before our next council meeting and meet all the requirements?
Yes.
Okay. So does anyone have a problem with us calling for a public hearing at 5 o'clock before our next council meeting?
Or?
The bonding.
This issue.
Yep, yep, exactly. Okay, so I'll call for a 5 o'clock meeting before our next council meeting, regular council meeting. Thank you so much, Pete.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Pete.
Yep.
All right, anybody in the audience have anything to bring to the council? Hearing none. Correspondents, you have the airport commission meeting information. And our next city council meeting, along with that public hearing, will be on August 16th at, the public hearing will be at 5 o'clock, the regular city council meeting will be at 5:30. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.